This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so I've called the meeting to order at 6:33 and now we will take a quick moment to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Alicia, may I have a roll call vote, please? Roll call, please.
Councilman DePinto?
Here.
Councilwoman Hall?
Here.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Here.
Claire, and Supervisor Hughes?
I'm here.
I am here.
Yeah, I heard you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Terrific, thank you. So, everybody, if you're on a tablet, you should be able to, or a computer or device, you should be able to see my screen, which has the agenda, and I'll roll through that as we move through. We're going to move on to the adoption of the minutes. This is actually a little bit of a different situation that we have here because we did not take official minutes in April because we met virtually. We actually had a, we're recording this, and in April we recorded this, and a transcript, which was required by the governor's office in order for us to meet remotely, was created. Now, this transcript is 132 pages long.
Yeah, there's a comma missing.
That's right. So, I personally did not go through and edit this document, and I personally don't feel that it's required to edit this document. There are some typos, but this document will always be in connection with a video of the meeting, so if anybody needed to see the, you know, get a general sense, it would always be in tandem with the video of the meeting. I hope that you all can support that.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can audit and make changes. What they say it is, is what it is.
Well, it is an editable document, but I believe that the spirit is correct, and it's typographical errors and things like that. So, if you all agree with this sentiment, then I would just need a motion and a second to bring this up for a vote.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ron.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it, then.
Ron made the motion, Chris made the second. Any discussion, any discussion at all? It's a very thorough document, that's all I can say. Okay, so I need a roll call vote, please, Alicia, to adopt the regular board meeting transcript.
Ken, I was going to abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Yep. Yep, that's a perfect decision.
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Hall?
Abstained.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on to new business. We have a couple of, a bunch of resolutions. First of all, I just want to talk very briefly about the update on COVID-19 in Essex and Essex County. To date, we have had only two individuals in the town of Essex who are, had tested positive, they have fully recovered, and rejoined regular daily life in the town of Essex, which is great news. In Essex County, the number has remained flat as I think of May 5th. There have been no new cases in the county at large, and I wanted to share with you this picture, this image here. If anybody is interested in being tested for COVID-19, they are able to do so at these locations, the Elizabeth Town Community Hospital. Give me a moment, please. Okay, good, thank you. The Elizabeth Town Community Hospital, E-Town, and Ticonderoga campuses are all able to perform testing by appointment only, and you can also go to the Adaronic Medical Center in Serenac Lake, as well as the Keene Health Center, and there is a mobile testing clinic that will be traveling around the county to provide testing as well. There's no charge for any of these tests. Your insurance card may be, maybe your insurance information may be collected. Did you go get a tag? But it is not required for, but you will not be charged. You will not be charged. Hold on one second, please. Excuse me. I apologize.
Hey, Ken.
Yes, sir.
This is just a random tech thought. I just know from doing all the Zoom with yoga lately, I know we have, I think we have 16 people in this group, which is fantastic, but if there's going to be an extended period of time where you're talking only, for example, if people can mute their device, that would help a lot, but there's a ton of background noise that's kind of distracting.
Yeah, it's only coming from one person, and I just need to isolate that person and give you one moment, please. Okay, I think... I know who it is, I'm just trying to mute them. There we go, I think I've solved that problem. I apologize.
Ah, the times we live in.
It's okay. Okay, so I left off that there are test, testing sites throughout the county, and the opportunity for someone to be tested is available. All the tests are free, and you can take the opportunity to be tested by calling ahead or scheduling an appointment. So, I just want to make sure that that's very clear. Overall, I think Essex and Essex County have done an excellent job at slowing the curve and flattening the curve, and I'm very proud of all of our citizens, both in Essex and outside of Essex, who have worked to keep us safe. So, does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that conversation? Okay, then I will move on to our resolutions. Resolution number 50 is a modification of the town hall cleaner compensation. We already had approved, somebody, December Damar, for the town hall cleaner, but it was not clear what her rate of pay would be in that original amendment, and so, in that original resolution, which was Resolution 43. So, Resolution 50 states the following resolution is being made to amend Resolution 43, 2020. The rate of compensation for the town hall cleaner is as follows. During the month of June through September, it'll be $300 monthly, which is $75 per week, or $75 weekly, excuse me, and October through May, the rate is $120 monthly, which is a $60 bi-weekly rate. And the reason why it's $75 in the June and September months is because we add an additional $15, it's $60 to clean town hall, plus 15 to clean the external restroom, and that is not guaranteed to be cleaned, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, but the $60 a week is for all year, except for the summer months, and if that external bathroom is cleaned, then we will pay an additional $15 to do that. So, I would need a motion to accept Resolution 50.
I'll move it.
Okay, Claire moves, and Chris seconds.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Concerns? Questions? Being none, roll call, please.
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes, yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, and it should be noted that in 2019, we paid $2,340 for town hall cleaning, and in 2020, with these numbers, that number will be reduced to $2,040. That is what we plan on spending for town hall cleaning, so I just want to make sure that that was clear as well. Moving on to Resolution number 51, clarification of dog control officer compensation. The following resolution is being made to clarify the rate of compensation for the position of dog control officer. Compensation will be coded to line item 35104.01, found in the Town of Essex 2020 final budget. The dog control officer will receive $65 per call plus mileage, and compensation will be based on the submission of a dog seizure and disposition report and an appropriately completed and submitted voucher. And I need a motion and a second for this resolution, please.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second.
Thank you, Claire. Any discussion, concerns?
Just one small thing, and I don't know if it's important or isn't important, but I was just thinking that if you go three months without a call, the person's not making anything. Should there be a $20 a month base fee that they get paid whether there's a call or not, just since they're taking that they are holding the position?
I don't know, Ron, you can tell me. Has that been done in the past?
When we used to have our own, it was a salaried position. I don't think it was, Claire, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember being per call. They got paid mileage when they went on call, but if my memory's correct, it was a salaried position. Doesn't mean it needs to be now, but just...
I also, I also had a question in the wording here, does a dog actually have to be seized? So, you know, submission of a dog seizure and the disposition report, but I was just wondering if, you know, nothing needed to be done, but the call was made, does he only get mileage on this? It was just food for thought there.
So, my understanding is that if there's a call, and he, and our dog control officer is required to go and take care of, even if they don't seize a dog, but they need to go take care of a situation, that would warrant, that would warrant payment, because he's essentially going to, if he feels he needs to submit a report for that, then he would be paid for that call.
I see.
If it helps, we had one call last year.
Oh, okay.
And that's why my concern was that the person's going to get paid virtually nothing, and then six months of no pay, we expect them to get up at 2 o'clock in the morning. That's why I was thinking we, it might be a good thing to have a, not a big amount of money, but something.
I would say that, and I can't remember, I don't have the budget with me, but I think that the total budget line for this is approximately $1,300, of which 1,027 of that goes to the SPCA, the North Country SPCA.
Right, they get almost everything.
They almost, they get like 80% of it, so we're really left with like 20, we're left with like $200 to $300 to compensate Jason for any calls that we make. So, if you did, if we, if the board supported the $20 per month, you're looking at $240 per year, just to be the dog control officer, not including any calls. So, we theoretically would, one call would put us over the budget line. That doesn't mean we wouldn't shift money around from another line to this to cover that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep.
I do think that when we were doing a shared, Cheryl and I were trying to figure this out, because Willsboro billed us late, they billed us in 2020 for the call in 2019, and I think that, if I remember correctly, the rate that the person got when it was a shared service was like $40. That is not a hard number, and that's just a recollection.
Well, I can live with it either way, but I sure wouldn't be interested in a job that I would have to be responsible for responding and never get paid anything for the whole year.
I've spoken, just for background.
Well, could you do this?
Go ahead. Yeah, what do you got, Claire?
Just for example, if we had no calls, could we give them the amount that's, whatever we've got, $200 at the end of the year? Would that be possible?
I could support that. I think that's the line I'd...
Yeah, I like that, and you can, whatever we pay, if they go on two calls, you can deduct that from the 200, and they get the rest of that.
Yeah, we could just clear the line and just write a check for the difference.
Right.
I like that very, very much.
Me too.
I'll amend the resolution to state that, if you want.
Please do, Ron.
I move that it's, there'd be a minimum pay of $200, and if a person, if the dog control officer makes no response, he'll get that at the end of the year, and if he has one, two, or three calls, then he'll get the difference from what he got paid, that and the mileage for the year, so he'll get a little bit something. So, at least there's a minimum amount, there'll be something till the person will get paid.
So, I'm just going to paraphrase that, Ron, and say that the difference, at the end of the year, the difference, the difference will be paid to the dog control officer out of the line item for that year.
Okay.
So, I have Ron, we've got some feedback on you, buddy. I have Ron making the motion to amend the resolution. I need a second for the amendment.
I can second that.
Thank you very much, Erin. Any discussion on the amendment that Ron has proposed? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I apologize, being none, roll call vote, I apologize.
This is on the amendment or on the whole resolution?
No, this is on the amendment. I need a roll call vote on the amendment, Alicia.
Okay. Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Council Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, so the motion to amend the resolution has passed, and now I need a motion to, I need a roll call vote on Resolution 51, please.
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, thank you very much. Claire, terrific idea. Thank you very much for bringing that forward, and Ron, thank you very much. Excellent. Okay, moving on to Resolution 52, hiring David Bender as a transfer station substitute. Selling the steak at the top there. The following resolution is being made to appoint David Bender of Elizabeth Town, New York, as a transfer station substitute. I need a motion and a second, please.
I thought somebody said he didn't want to do that.
He did not want to do it full-time. He did not want to be the guy that's there every day, or all three days. He only wanted to be an on-call sub.
Okay, okay.
Resolution 53, the next, yeah, the next resolution deals with what you just spoke about, hiring an official person to be there three days a week.
All right, so he wants to be the sub?
He wants to be the sub, yes. He tried it out for a day and a half, two days, and you saw that in the bill, in the bill pay. He realized that he did not want to have that type of responsibility, and so, but he's happy to be a substitute if we need him on call.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Claire, would you like to make the motion?
Sure.
Great, thanks, Claire, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Alicia, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman DePinto? Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Resolution 53, hire Roger Howard as transfer station attendant and water wastewater laborer. Following resolution is being made to hire Roger Howard of Westport, New York, as a transfer station attendant, three days a week, and water wastewater laborer, on call, approximately 15 hours per week. And I would need a motion and a second for this resolution, please.
I'll make the motion. What's happening with Jeremy?
I'll explain that once we get through this motion, please.
I can second the motion.
Great, yep, thank you, Erin. So, discussion, Jeremy, who is our, currently one of our three, one of the individuals who's there three days a week, he is still out on medical leave.
So, basically, we're going to have who? Basically, we're going to have Harold?
We have Harold.
And who?
And we will, if the board supports this resolution, we will have Roger working with Harold.
Okay.
And if Harold requires a third person, right now, because we're only doing trash, the work is not incredibly laborious, as it would be if we were doing trash and recycling. So, Harold is making the decision on a day-by-day basis about whether he needs two people there. If he does, he'll have Roger there if the board supports it, and if he needs a third person, we have a few substitutes. We have Milt, we now have Mr. Bender to call on if they need a third person. Jeremy will return when he is medically able to do so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for asking. Any other questions about this, about this resolution? Being none, roll call vote, please.
No.
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Jack?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, thank you very much. Resolution 54, appointing Jonathan J. White to the Board of Assessment Review. This following resolution is being made to appoint Jonathan J. White to the Board of Assessment Review, a position that he has previously participated in, and he will be the third person to fill out, he'll be the, we had a vacant spot, and this would fill out our Board of Assessment Review just in time for Grievance Day, coming up on May 26th.
I'll move that.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ron. Anybody want to make a second on that?
I'll second.
Great, thank you very much, Chris. Okay, any questions, concerns?
Is that, I was, is that a paid position, Ken?
It is, yes, it is. Yep.
One of our few.
Yeah, I think it's $102 per day that they're paid for that. Yeah, yeah, one of our few is right, Ron is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would recommend that Jay serve as the chairman of that group of three. The other two are, this will be their first time doing it, so Jay has all the training, he has all the knowledge and background to be successful to lead that group through their process. If there's no other conversation, discussion, I need a roll call, please.
Do you need amended for that, that he'll be the chair, or is that something that they just take place?
I think that just, I think that takes place among them, but I, it's just a recommendation on my part, but it's not...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are they all up to date on training?
Yes, they are. So, training did not take place traditionally at the county. I've been in touch with Terry North, who is the brand-new property, real property person of the county. She has sent each one of our individuals, our members, a 15-minute video about what it's like to be on the BAR and what they might encounter, training video, as well as a whole host of binders and information that they're asked to read prior to the actual, prior to the actual Grievance Day. So, yes, they have been sufficiently trained. Yeah, thank you. That's why I'm very happy that Jay's stepped up to offer his expertise, because he brings a, he's a veteran with us, and that helps all of us out very much.
It helps a lot.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Being none, Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Okay, Resolution 55. This is a document that Tina brought forward to my attention. This is, that allows me to sign a contract with Xylem for annual preventative maintenance. Following resolution is being made to enter into a one-year agreement at a cost of $3,000 with Xylem Water Solutions to provide preventative maintenance to our four flight pump stations, containing a total of eight pumps. Xylem is our manufacturing representative for this equipment. Typically, we would have competing, because of the rate, we would have had three different quotes. I went back in the records and looked over how Ron handled this last year, and because it is proprietary, it's proprietary equipment, I'm going off of what was done last year and foregoing the need to get multiple quotes, because this is their proprietary hardware.
Yep, that saves us.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there, and I don't think that there's any, so I just, for historical purposes, I think in 2016, we spent $2,480 on this, and in 2019, we spent $3,675.66 on this, so we are right in the ballpark of what we would...
Yeah, that included parts in the contracts, if you read it, it's, parts are extra anyway, so it could be more than the 3,000, that's kind of the minimum.
Yes, you're right, any parts requiring replacement will be charged accordingly.
All right.
We're getting genuine parts.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the second and third pages here with the invoice.
Yes.
And the one invoice says $2,480, so that is what we paid last year. And the one invoice says 2,480. So, that is, that what we paid last year?
Uh, no, this was a voucher from 2016, if you look in the upper right-hand corner. But in your defense, this does state, this does talk about sewer preventative maintenance, and this is for, well, if it's water solutions, it's possible that it is also for, for sewer as well. So, yeah, the about, the first voucher is 2016. Sorry, Claire, go ahead.
All right. So, we're not going to worry about that. This, the second one is from last year, correct?
Uh, yes, it says the invoice date is November 5th of 2019.
Okay, so basically, those two, I'm assuming, have already been paid?
I provided this just for historical purposes.
And we're, okay, fine. So, we're paying just 3,000?
Oh, yeah, this, yeah, the last two pages, when I, if I have a motion, if I have a resolution and I can provide some historical data that help educate you as a board member about what we're doing, why we're spending the money, I, I like to try and provide that just to provide some empowerment and education. And so, those last two invoices were just purely FYI on what we had done historically.
Okay, I was just curious if we'd have to pay those two also. All right, no problem.
Only for the $3,000.
Okay.
Claire, would you like to make the motion for this resolution?
I will.
Great, thank you, Claire. And do I have a second, please?
I can second.
Awesome, thank you, Erin. Any other conversation concerns? Being none, roll call vote?
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hugh?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on, that completes the resolutions. Moving on to Water District, Water District Number One Project Update. There's been a lot of action going on in the past couple of days, and certainly within this past month, but definitely within the past week or two related to the Water District. So, first of all, the State Emergency Management Office, we have petitioned them to provide us with a, a water treatment trailer, a temporary trailer, that is, assuming it's kind of like a tractor trailer, that has all the water filtration systems that we need inside of that trailer. And if the State Emergency Management Office is able to give us this trailer for the time that we're under construction, that means we don't have to build one ourselves, which means we are going to save a lot of money and a lot of time. And so, I wanted to let you know that I am working directly with the State Emergency Management Office right now to, to, to do what we can to secure that treatment trailer. So, if you pray, please pray for this treatment trailer, because it's going to save us a lot of time and a lot of money. The second thing is NBRC, which is Northern Borders Regional Commission. I think you're all aware that we are applying for a $500,000, I'll make it sound better, a half a million dollar grant to help offset the cost of the water treatment plant upgrade project. We are in full, full, full swing on this one right now. Office of Community Resources, Anna Reynolds, and Rob Wick, actually, is, and Hannah Jakes, and Jessica Delorye are the four individuals that have really stepped up at the county to help us out to prepare for this, this grant application, which is due June 1st. We have received letters of support from Congresswoman Stefanik. We have received letters of support from Senator Betty Little, from Assemblyman Dan Seck, from North Country Chamber of Commerce CEO and President Gary Douglas. I have letters in, written letters to Governor Cuomo's office, to Senator Schumer's office, Senator Gillibrand's office. I'm waiting to hear back from them. I also have probably a dozen or so letters from local businesses in the Hamlet, who are part of the Water, Water District. I have received probably two, almost maybe three dozen, letters from individual residents who are also in the Hamlet and in the Water District, supporting our application request. So, this grant is due June 1st. I'll be meeting, going out to the Office of Community Resources on Monday to, to sign some documents that they need signed, and we are on our way. So, if there's any new news related to this, I will post it on social media and on our website as well, and I'll communicate with, with the public as we know more. So, if there's anybody listening in the audience who has not yet submitted a letter of support and you do live in the Water District, we very much would appreciate that, and you can send those letters to my attention at Town Hall. I also wanted to share with you number three, under H, the updated cost summary for the project as per Cedarwood. Cedarwood is our engineering firm, who we are, who we have hired to do all of this work for us. And as you can see from the, the Excel spreadsheet here, these are, these are our numbers. I spoke with Jonathan, Jonathan Sukup, who is our liaison, or he's our Cedarwood engineer, just to get some information to try and clarify what some of these numbers mean. And I'll, and I'll just do that very, very quickly right now. If you take a look at the top, the first four numbers, 750,000, 1,000,000, 720,000, 530,000, and construction total of 3 million, those are estimates. There's a lot, that, that's an estimation of what the construction total is going to be. There's a lot of, there's always, if you've built a house, or you've ever done something that costs money, and it's, and it's a big deal, it involves other people, you know that there's a lot of unknowns going into it. There could be change orders, there can be just unknowns. So, this is a, this is an estimate that Cedarwood has put together. The $750,000 building construction subtotal is for the demolition, the water treatment expansion, the new, the new building plus the roofing. So, that's what that number represents right there. The contingency is if there are change orders, the $530,000, which is a, is a high number for a contingency, but if there are change orders, if we do run into some unforeseen problems that, no matter what we thought about, what we did, the construction, the, the contract is committed, we say, hey, we've got to do this, we are, have a contingency of, of that number right now, just in case. The numbers underneath are, represent previous costs that the town has already incurred, and most likely already paid, as you can see, almost every single one says previous. So, those numbers are there. The numbers in green on the right-hand side, outside of the box, the $25,000 and the $38,000, those are, those are new, new, new numbers that Jonathan is, is guessing that we will, estimating, I shouldn't say guessing, but estimating that we potentially will have to spend for these services, for example, Oric, Harrington, and Sutcliffe, that is our bond counsel, you're going to hear more about that in a few moments, and Andrews O'Holland, who's been doing a lot of our planning for us. These are, these are numbers that represent additional money that we may have to spend for their, for their services. But everything, everything in this group with either green or red numbers, or the zeros, represents previous professional services. At the bottom of this list, Cedarwood Engineering Services, this bottom group, Phase One, Phase Two, Pilot Studies, Phase Three, et cetera, with the complete project total, this is Cedarwood's estimation for their services. So, I just wanted to put this out there, just so we're as transparent as we possibly can be. I have no problem posting this information on our website so that people can, can see what we're, what we're dealing with. And while I'm speaking about that, I want to just draw your attention to my screen for a moment. If you are listening by phone, our new, new website, essexnewyork.com, has in the very center, under General Info, I've created just today a water treatment plant upgrade project website, webpage, excuse me. And so, this is where everything dealing with the water treatment plant upgrade project is going to be posted. Meeting dates, documents, PDF, anything that the board is approving or signing or agreeing into is going to be posted, a copy of it will be posted right here, so that there's clear and open transparency with the community about, about this project. So, that's it, essexnewyork.com, and in the center, you can click on the water treatment plant upgrade project link. So, are there any questions about, about the cost summary? Again, this is, this is a summary, and this is Cedarwood's projection.
Seems to me it's grown quite a bit over the last, however, many months, but I don't know, they're all still estimates until we actually get the bids anyway.
Correct. That's correct. I think they're, I think they're, I think they're estimating a little bit high, so that if it does come up to that high level, it's not so much of a shock. And so, we hope that we can get good estimates, good bids, and we hope that we can get that Northern Borders Grant, because you could take $500,000 right off of this. We hope we can get that trailer, so you could take, hopefully, approximately, I'm guessing, at least 100 to 250,000 dollars off of this list. That would be lovely. So, the list is what it is. I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was shared with all of you and brought up in public. Any, any comments? Thank you, Ron, for yours.
Yep, no, it's just scary. The one, one positive perhaps is that the delta and the contingency are about the same, because I have no idea where we'll come up with the delta, if it gets to that higher number, because I don't know of any grants coming down unless we're fortunate on the Northern Borders. But if we don't get that, that's another million dollars in, in loan, basically, with the Northern Borders and the delta that we're going to have to pay for.
Yep.
But we don't have options.
In education, we call this an unfunded mandate, so.
Yep.
So, we're going to, again, if you pray, please pray for, for good numbers and, and strong bids that are, that are friendly to our, our community. So, I'm optimistic. I am optimistic that we're going to make this and, and do it well, because we have to. Okay, and moving on to number four of the Water District Number One Project Update, I want to let you all know that we are required to hold a public hearing related to the bond, related to the bond resolution, and related to the, the Estoppel Notice and the Public Interest Order. And this is something that we need to do tonight. Did I provide you with copies of the, did I, I think I provided you with copies of the, of the resolution? So, here's what I'm going to do, because I would read this in public, so I'm, I'm going to take a moment, and if you all can just please bear with me, this is really important. We, the Town of Essex Town Council must hold a public hearing, and I need to read this out loud so that we have it for the record in the transcript, and that the audience can hear it as well. Whereas, the Town Board of the Town of Essex, Essex County, New York, has caused to be prepared a map, plan, and report, including an estimated cost pursuant to Section 202B of the Town Law, relating to the increase in improvement of the facilities of Water District Number One in the Town of Essex, Essex County, New York, also known as the Water District Number One, being the construction of an addition to and reconstruction of the water treatment plant, including original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, appurtenances, and site and incidental improvements, and expenses in connection therewith at a maximum estimated cost of $3 million. And whereas, said capital project has been determined to be a Type 1 action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and the implementation of which, as proposed, the Town Board has determined will not result in any significant environmental impact, and the documentation relating to SECR, including a full environmental assessment form, is available in the Office of the Town Clerk for inspection during normal hours. And whereas, it is now desired to call a public hearing on the question of the increase and improvement of the facilities of said Water District Number One in the matter described above, and to hear all persons interested in the subject thereof concerning the same in accordance with the provisions of 202B of the Town Law. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Town Board of the Town of Essex, Essex County, New York, as follows. Section 1, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall on Main Street in Town of Essex, New York, in said town. Now, this rec, this, I'm just going to take a break here and say two things. The suggested date for this meeting, Town Board members, please get out your calendar, is May 28th. That is a Thursday evening.
Yeah, it's a narrow window we have to have it in.
We must have this meeting within 10 to 20 days of this meeting tonight. And so, the rec, the recommendation of May 28th has been proposed.
It wor, it works for me. What time?
6:30.
Perfect.
Ron, that works for you, 6:30. Chris, does that work for you, 6:30?
Yep. Yes, it does. I'll put it in my calendar right now.
Great. Claire, does that work for you, 6:30?
It does. This is at Town Hall?
That's the second part of this conversation. Erin Hall, does that work for you?
6:30 on May 28th is fine for me.
Okay, thank you. So, this does state that we will hold that meeting at Town Hall. My concern is, is that we will not be able to, we will not be able to do that. And so, I'm, again, being overly cautious, and I'd like to recommend that we hold that town, this public hearing remotely, or we hold it in a location that allows the public, because it is a public hearing, that would allow the public to attend and be socially distanced. If that is the desire of the board, then I would recommend that we use the Grange Hall on that evening at that time, to set up a table for the board that would allow us to be six feet apart from one another, and provides ample space for participants to sit in, in, in chairs that are, again, separated out.
Is the Grange, if we met at the Grange, isn't there something in that MOU that kind of prohibits us from doing that?
If, in the, in the event of an emergency, there is a clause at the end of the MOU that allows us to use it.
Okay, I don't have the MOU in front of me, but I know that there was, there was something about meeting there.
Yep. And I, I, I don't have it with me in the moment. I can pull it up if you want to see it, but I do know that I have looked at it, and there is a clause that does allow us to use that building if, 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 if there is an emergency-type need, and we are unable to use our own Town Hall.
And there was also the offer from Craig Jackson, Chief of the Fire Department, that we could use the, the Fire Hall.
That is a true statement as well, yeah.
And that, that would avoid the, any potential problems, because people can sue you for anything, but they can't sue us for meeting the Fire Hall. And also, it's in the Water District, and I think, I think it's pretty good size. We can, if, if more people show up than we think, we can always move the vehicles out of the bay, and certainly, that's a lot, larger area than the Grange.
Ron, do you have keys, Ron? Now, my jokes don't fly, okay. So, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Chris. Would you like me to change this to the Essex Fire Hall, the Essex Fire Department, Number One?
I would.
Okay. Is there any, any, any opposition to that?
I agree. I agree.
Okay, thank you, Erin.
And just again, just again, it's, you know, in this day and age, and being cautious, it's still, yes, I know this is the public hearing, is it just going to be too difficult to have a public hearing virtually? Is that what we're saying?
For me, in my opinion, I want to make sure that if the public has questions they want to ask, it is, even though I'm the tech guy in the room, it is a lot easier to manage that in a face-to-face situation, so there's absolutely no question about what somebody's saying, or didn't say, or- So there's absolutely no question about what somebody's saying or didn't say or, you know, I, I want to just be very upfront with this. So,
That's fine. Okay.
Yep. So I will check with, um, I'll check with Chief Jackson on, uh, on the use of that space and, um, we'll let you know. So I'm going to continue. A public hearing will be held at the Essex Fire Department Fire Hall on Route 22 in the Town of Essex, New York on May 28th, 2020 at 6:30, uh, PM, prevailing time, on the question of the increase and improvement of the facilities of Water District Number One in the Town of Essex, Essex County, New York, in the manner described in the preamble hereof, and to hear all persons interested in the subject thereof concerning the same, and to take such action thereon as is, as is required or authorized by law. Section two, we're almost done. The Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a copy of the notice of public hearing here and after provided to be published once in the official newspaper, and also to cause a copy thereof to be posted on the signed board of the town. Such publication and posting to be made not less than 10 nor more than 20 days before the date designated for the hearing. Section three, the notice of public hearing shall be in substantially, shall be in substantially the form attached here to as Exhibit A and hereby made a part hereof. Section four, the order shall take place immediately. The following, the question of the adoption of the foregoing order was duly put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows. Alicia, would you please do the honors?
Yes.
Do we have to have a motion and a second?
Um, that is a good question.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm wondering.
It certainly can't be wrong if we do.
Um, I, you are correct. Uh, I, well, I agree with you. I don't see a motion or a second here, but you are right. In order to, in order for a, an amendment, or in order for a resolution to be put to a vote, we must have our, Robert's Rule says we must have a, a motion and a second. So, um, I will add that to this document. So if I can have the motion. Ron, Ron, is that you?
I, I'll be very happy to move it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. So,
Can I ask, can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
I, I think, I think it's great, the, doing it at the fire hall, the firehouse. But is it possible to still broadcast as we are now in case, you know, folks still don't feel safe coming out? I think it's a pretty simple thing to do. I think it would kind of be the best of both. People can come live and people can, you know, do the, the two meeting thing.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Good, great suggestion. We want as many people involved as possible. If they don't feel safe coming out, we want them to be able to at least hear the, uh, the, uh, the proceedings.
Yeah, because there are people that will not go out.
Oh, I get it. Yep, I get it. Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, guys.
Great feedback. Love it. Great feedback. Thank you.
Good, good idea, Chris. I like it.
Okay. Uh, if there's no more discussion or conversation about this.
Is this confined?
What's that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is this confined to members of the Water District only or is this for the entire town?
The, this is a public hearing.
My question, the reason I'm, I don't have any problem with the public, but I'm just thinking that the people in the Water District are the only ones that are truly affected by this and the cost. The general public is not. I mean, the general public, of course, is welcome. I don't mean that. And I don't, I'm not advocating that we, uh, you know, I, I don't want to confine it to just the Water District, but I mean, I was just curious.
Yeah, I, you're, I think you're right on both accounts, Claire. It, this, this will only affect those who are, uh, living in the Water District and the general public should be made aware of it so that they know what's going on in their town, whether it affects them or not.
Oh, I agree with that. I have no problem with that. But I mean, I was just curious.
Hey, everybody can come. A public hearing is open to everybody.
Yep.
Right. I just worry that some people who aren't in the Water District are concerned that they will have to pay for this. That was my thought in asking the question.
Okay. Well, I think that we need to be abundantly clear that this is the project for the Water, for the Water District, uh, for those, for our Water District. I think people know whether they're in or not and, uh, they would, um, they would act accordingly.
Well, I agree. And as I say, the general public should be aware and if they want to come, we would welcome them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I can, I can, I can make an invitation really, uh, like that. I can make sure it's, it's worded that way.
That's good.
Yep. Thank you, Claire, for your, your input. Thank you. Any other, uh, any other thoughts? Being none. Alicia, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes. Thank you very much. And I'll be working with Alicia to, uh, prepare all the necessary documents so that we, uh, have everything we need for success. Thank you, everybody, very, very much. I also, I'm gonna put this up here and just put it in front of your face here. Uh, this document right here is a timeline for water treatment plant bidding and, and, and awarding. Uh, this is a document I believe I put up online today. I can't re, I, I don't recall. I think I did. Uh, but it basically outlines our, um, what we're doing over the next couple of months, uh, between May and August. And, and Ron, this is, this document, as you may have seen, um, just basically outlined the conversation that we had yesterday with the individuals, uh, from, uh, from Community Services and, uh, Community Resources, excuse me, and,
Right. They have same, same exact dates. Yep.
That's exactly right. Same exact date. That's exactly right. So I'll make sure that this is put up on the website, uh, for the public and if the Town Board doesn't have it, but I think you do, I'll make sure that that is, is clear as well. Okay. Moving on. Uh, very quickly, uh, I want to let all of you know, we have been talking briefly about a, a new Town of Essex website and, uh, I have great news. It has been created and built and I hope that you all have the opportunity to check it out. Uh, it was, uh, a, a lot of work getting the, getting everything migrated over from the old website to the new website. I would like to give a very, very special thank you to Maureen Delwater, who is our, uh, who is the webmaster, webmistress, if you will, for the previous website. She put a lot of energy and time. Uh, she was always at the ready to answer any questions or solve any problems. Um, and I just want to say, Maureen, uh, I think you're on the call. Thank you so very much for all that you've done to, uh, bring your talents to the, to the website and to help me, um, bring this into this, uh, into this new site here. So as you can see, all of our departments are listed. Uh, you can also see that, um, uh, all of our agendas and minutes are, are posted, uh, both for the Town Board, the Planning Board, uh, the BAR, the DBA, as well as our committees, uh, ac, access to our calendar, uh, when things are happening, um, access to the current budget. Uh, we also have all of our departments listed as well. So for example, we have a new dog control officer and we are adding information to make it very simple. My goal as the designer of the site is you should be able to access anything you want in three clicks. So I want you to be able to get to whatever you want in three clicks. So if you find it's more difficult to get to something in three clicks than you wanted to, please let me know and I'll be happy to, uh, to speak with you about that and find out how we can make it easier. So the new website is up and running and, uh, I hope you like it. Okay, moving on. Um, there is a picket fence on the south side of the Town Hall green. It is rotten. It is, um, it's actually, parts of it have fallen away. Uh, the picket fence used to run from, uh, run along the entire boundary, um, going from Station Road, uh, down along the, the, the shrubbery to the, to the far corner, to the south, southwest corner, and then it came back down toward the driveway. And, uh, that far western wall, uh, fence has, has been gone for many, many years. And now the fence that it remains, which is on the south side of the property there, is, is, is rotting away and is, is a bit unsightly. And I, uh, wanted to get the permission of the board to, um, to have Bradley, uh, remove that fence.
No problem. It was built because the person who had the property south insisted that the town put it up and put it up all on town property with several feet the other side of it so they could maintain it. So that does not show exactly what our property line is. So I think, uh, uh, it's a good thing that the residual will disappear.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Chris, uh, Aaron, any, any comments, thoughts that you'd like to share or?
I think, I think it sounds great to make it go away, especially if it's built, uh, not built on the proper, uh, property lines.
Well, it definitely is inside of our property line. It, uh, just is, becomes very unsightly. And, uh, it's got moss growing on it and it's, it, I, I'm recommending it, it become down so that we actually will have a nice natural green border, uh, of shrubs that will, will outline our property, our property boundary.
It seems straightforward to me. Sounds good.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you all for your input on that. Uh, okay, moving on. Um, also wanted to talk briefly about, uh, this is a new item that I, uh, that came up just, uh, yesterday, actually. Uh, and that's why it's in italics here. Uh, second quarter water payment. Uh, we did not assess a late fee for anybody who did not pay their water, uh, water bill or water sewer bill, um, at the end of March, early April. And I would like to, um, I would like the board to consider and support uh, that we do not assess a late fee for the second quarter, which will come due, um, in, uh, end of June.
No problem with that.
I, I agree. I think it sounds great.
Okay.
I would agree with that, too.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Aaron, are you, are you supportive of this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you very, very much. Um, okay, moving on. Um, there's a lot here, but there's actually not much to say, which is good. Um, the LED, uh, streetlight conversion, uh, I have sent into, uh, New York State's, uh, NICEG, Electric Gas, um, the, uh, the finalized list of, um, uh, of streetlights and the wattage. And I provided for you a, um, uh, an outline, uh, spreadsheet of what I submitted to them for their consideration. This is not final yet. Uh, they're going to review it and come back to me with information. Uh, but I wanted to let you know, you can see on the left side, outside of the box, you'll see the name of the geographical location, either a person's house or a, um, or a geographical point, uh, to help you know where that actual, uh, light is. Uh, the third column from the right is our column. That's the LED wattage choice. And this column here is where, based on our previous conversations, uh, the, I, I made a best guess, a best estimate decision based on, uh, location, based on proximity to homes, based on safety, uh, and based on, uh, and based on general location of what the wattage would be. So, um, the, the colors, uh, the, the second page represents my email back to NICEG. I still have some questions and problems, uh, related to the spreadsheet, uh, and I'm working with NICEG to finalize all of that before we actually begin the conversion. So just wanted to make sure you were, uh, up to date uh, and in the loop on what, um, on what, uh, on what I was doing with that.
Yeah, I appreciate all your work on that because it was a jumbled mess. They, they were referring to lights. Everybody had different numbers and names. So I appreciate getting this all on a, on a one-page sheet that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I actually had to personally go to every single light and map it out again, uh, based on what, uh, Troy and Banks did for us, which was super helpful, totally worth the money. Uh, but we, I, I needed to get a, uh, an, a, a, a local view and make sure that we knew what was going on. Uh, their numbers did not match up to anything that existed in Waylandsburg. So, or District Two for the lighting district. So, uh, I, they were able to clarify that, that for them and, um, and this is what we have here. So this is a to-be-continued conversation.
That's great.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, great news. Um, PESH, which is the, um, the, the arm of the Department of Labor that's, uh, that's, uh, is responsible for, uh, protecting, protecting employees. Uh, they cited us last year, last summer, for some issues at the transfer station. Uh, Ron, as then supervisor, uh, began working with PESH to, um, to mitigate these issues. And then I, when I took office, uh, continued our work to mitigate these issues. We had an original, original abatement date, which basically means that we were gonna have everything fixed and done and A-OK. Uh, the abatement date originally was April 30th. Well, COVID-19 took place and there was some miscommunication, uh, between the county and the town about who was gonna pay for what. And it ends up that, uh, I had to reapply for a new abatement date. So I went as far out as I could and got a new abatement date approved just, uh, just last week. And I got the official paperwork today of December 31st, 2020. So that gives us the remainder of the year to, uh, ensure, um, all of our citations are cleaned up. The biggest issue is that we need to hire a fencing company to replace, uh, replace and install, uh, a new fence, um, along the, along the perimeter of the, of the transfer station, uh, from the, around, around the chute area all the way down behind the recycling, all the way to the, um, to the trailer. So, uh, I don't suspect that that is going to be a, uh, a, a, a bank breaker, uh, but I do need to get quotes for, uh, hiring a fence company to put in, uh, fencing up there. So that will be coming, uh, to you in the next month or two, uh, depending on my ability to get to it and depending on the fencing company's ability to put a quote together. So just wanted to put that out there. Any questions about, about PESH or the fence? Okay, terrific. So, um, number seven. There's a lot here, but we're really only gonna focus, uh, in, in conversation for just a few moments on letter A. Um, so back in January, on January 8th, 2015, uh, Kevin Rowland, who is an auditor with the Office of the State Comptroller, met with, uh, the Town of Essex, performed an audit and provided, uh, the town with a two-page list of things, uh, of issues that Mr. Rowland had and issues that needed to be dealt with, with respect to our audit. Several of those items were related to policies and agreements. So for example, uh, Mr. Rowland stated that we did not have, uh, a, a written agreement between the transfers, for the transfer station, or written agreement between the two towns needed to be, uh, done. And that, back in 2015, the last one that they had on file was from 1997. And to my knowledge, I don't believe we have upped our agreement with the Town of Willesboro for the transfer station since 2015. I can't find any, any, any,
No, that we have since the original 97th.
Okay. Oh, no, I have something from 2015. Uh, I do have, I do have that. Yep, I do have that document. Um, another one was an investment policy, a procurement policy, um, uh, and some other, some, some other, uh, Code of Ethics, a policy manual, an acceptable use policy. So I had the opportunity this past month to meet with the Town of Essex Policy Committee. We had a rousing meeting. It's just me. And we, and we, uh, me, uh, sat down and, uh, I actually worked with Angel Forbes, uh, And we, and we, me, sat down and I actually worked with Angel Forbes, who is our town clerk. And we went through every policy that we could find, which we found in a red policy manual. Some of the policies were missing. And we've digitized every single policy that we have. So, if you take a look in letter B, and let her be on this, over the next, the course of the next five or six months, I want to, I would like to see the town update its policies. And I want to do it in a slow, methodical way that doesn't overwhelm any of you, and allows for each of you, allows for the town board to have essentially two meetings to discuss and then, and essentially adopt. So, as you can see in B1, the procurement policy would be brought to you in June and hopefully adopted in July, which gives you a full month to read it, edit it, mark it up, make comments, back to me, modifications. Job descriptions, again, June and July. So we'll do two each month. The investment policy, July and August. Employee manual would be presented in July for August adoption, and the Code of Ethics will be presented in August for September. We do need to develop a, an MOU. We've talked about this with the Belden Library. That is for future consideration potentially in the fall, or if I get my act together sooner, for earlier consideration, but most likely not until the fall. Development of a fund balance policy and development of a multi-year financial plan. So these are ideas that I'm thinking about when I am not thinking about coronavirus in Essex, and I'm trying to get ahead and trying to get things done. These are the things that I'm thinking about. Now, I'd like to go back to letter A. There are two agreements, there's one, there's one agreement and one policy that I would like to start talking about this month. The first one is a drone acceptable use policy. We were gifted a drone. And by a very generous, very generous community member, for which I am personally very grateful because this drone is going to allow us to increase and enhance the visual aspects of our marketing campaign, which will be taking place at some point in the, and hopefully the not-too-distant future. Another conversation for another day. I brought the drone out to test it and fly it and just get to learn how to feel it. And I brought it behind town hall a couple of weeks ago, and I flew it around, around the Hamlet and on the shoreline and things like that. Well, I received a very respectfully-written letter the next day with some concerns from somebody who lives in the Hamlet about the use of the drone. And it made me realize that we need to have an acceptable use policy for this drone for two reasons. One, it helps make sure that we have transparency with our public about why we're using the drone. And two, it codifies who is able to fly the drone, why, and the steps that are required in order to be able to give somebody the control of the drone. Now, I should say that the drone has already been and is in process of being registered, I should say, I've already submitted the paperwork to the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, the same administration that governs hot air balloons and gliders and planes. Drones also fall into this realm as well. So, I feel it's our responsibility to come up with an acceptable use policy for the drone. Now, when I went online, I had a very difficult time finding any municipal drone policy. So, we may actually be one of the first municipalities around that actually has an acceptable use policy for a drone. So, what you're reading here is snippets of two policies that I found online for a university and for a parish in Louisiana. But much of this language I generated in between. There are other, there's other additions that I want to make to this, but I wanted to let you know that I think it's important for us to have this acceptable use policy for this device, for this machine, that will be flying potentially over people's homes, that will be flying around our town, that will be, once people find out we have it, they may ask us, can we use the drone to film around our private business? And these are all things that I want to make sure that the town board agrees on via this, via this document. So, there's nothing to, yes, please, Aaron.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ken. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Okay. I actually, I think the use of drone would be great for our town. I did have pause on the second page, item, item five, what you just briefly mentioned. If it does, I guess, you know, loaned out to a resident who's liable if it's broken. And so that.
If they use it wrong.
Or it crashes, who knows, you know?
Yeah, so let me address that. And maybe I, it looks like I would need to maybe provide some clarification here. Only an approved town employee would be able to fly this drone at any time. So, right now, so, so for example, if Essex Farm wanted drone footage, they knew we had it, right? We can't, I, we can't accept money for it. We can't, that raises it to a different level. But I would work with the Kimballs to go out there and I would fly it on their behalf, collect the video photography, and then I would send that to them, for them to use as they wanted to, to market their, to market their farm, or any business that wanted to do that. So it would only be done by a town employee. And what I have not included here is, it was brought to my attention by, by an individual, by an individual in town about this great YouTube channel called Drone Valley. And they actually have courses that you can kind of take that allow you to talk about wind and terrain and mechanical issues and electrical issues. And I think that, I didn't include this in here because I got this information after I wrote it, but I would include in here, a person wishing to fly the drone needs to sign, needs to watch this video, this video, this video, and they have to have a sign-off on each one. So that's an additional language I would put in here.
Okay, that's better clarification. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
I'm a little confused, Ken.
Well, I.
Ron, let's start with you.
Yeah, we go from page one, which is about the town drone, and then you flip over to the rest of part four, and you're talking about, it appears to me, other people's drones. So this is, is this for both our drone and anybody else who happens to have a drone and wants to use it in the Town of Essex?
Oh, okay, so that's a really great question. This is only for, and it looks like I probably have to work on my pronouns here, this is only for our drone. This covers any drone that's owned by the Town of Essex. We have zero jurisdiction over anybody who owns a drone privately that wishes to fly it around. That is, that is their, that's their drone. They can do with it as they wish, as long as they're.
Okay.
Under the FAA. So.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, I think we, I need to go through and just clean that language up and make sure it's clear that it's only our town-owned drones. Claire, did you have a comment?
I did. I, I had two or three phone calls, people who were concerned about the drone.
Yeah.
My only concern when I wrote this was letter D, where it says, fly only for recreational purposes. Now, I somehow can't resign myself to the fact that we need, the town needs it for recreational purposes. Clarification, please.
So, the purpose of the drone as a recreational tool is to, we're not flying it for commercial purposes. We are not flying this drone.
Right.
And receiving compensation for the flight of this drone. We are flying it as hobbyists who are using it to take video and still photography, to eventually use that in maybe a video promoting the Essex, that we send to Roost, or if a brochure is made, or the website. If you look at the website, one of the, one of the, actually two of the images on the very first page of the website, the homepage, one is of an image about 50 feet off the ground of the vineyard up the hill. And the second is an image that is taken just behind the steeple of the community church. So, the community church didn't pay the town for that, and certainly the owners of the vineyard did not pay the town for that image. So we are essentially flying for recreational purposes in that we are not receiving compensation for, for any flight that we take, either for the town or for private purposes, on behalf of somebody privately, like I mentioned the Essex Farm example earlier.
I'm gonna have to think about that because, I mean, I don't know. To me, recreational purposes would be, I just go out and fly around and do whatever. That I could see as an individual, but I, I don't know.
Yeah. Potentially the word recreational.
Maybe non-commercial is a better terminology there.
I'm literally just so you all know.
I mean, if our main purpose.
Claire first, please.
Go ahead.
I, I just, I need to clarify in my own mind exactly what our primary purpose for this drone is. Now, right now, I seem to feel it's for marketing purposes. Am I off-base there?
I don't think so. No, I think that's the safest place that we can focus our energy on right now, is to use it to develop new ways of taking photography of the town and video of the town, and not, again, not of anybody's individual house, because that's not our interest. And if it is our interest, we certainly would seek permission prior to doing that. But our interest is to get broad images of, of the Hamlet, or of the, of Waylandsburg, or of Jersey Street, or of Echo Farm, or other places in our town where we previously have not been able to get footage. Of this 21st century caliber, if you will.
I'm just gonna have to think about this. As you, everybody knows I'm behind in technology. But, and I accept that fact. However, I just, I have to do some more thinking about this drone because the person that called me, actually, two people called me, and their major concern was invasion of privacy. Now, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna have to do some more thinking about this, but that one article really stood out when I read this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Basically where I'm coming from.
No, I think that's a really, really good point, Claire.
I had a comment, what we could do is, is also give, you know, postings as to, between one and two, on Saturday, on Main Street in Essex, the drone will fly for 45 minutes. You know, there could be, because I think that is a valid concern. People don't want a drone flying around their backyard, especially when they don't know. So I think some of it is the wording with this, Ken, that maybe just needs to be fine-tuned or absolutely we can discuss more.
Sure. Yeah, that's why we're, that's why I'm putting it over a two, a two-meeting conversation, because I want you, this is brand-new to you guys. I just wrote it a week and a half ago. You know, when I got that email from that concern, I took it to heart, you know? We've gotta, we've gotta have an understanding about this. And so I basically put this draft together so that it did foster conversation tonight, as well as over the next couple of weeks, so that when we come back to it in June, Claire can feel better about it, she can have her questions answered. Aaron's points, which are valid, can be cleaned up and refined, and so that when we do put this to a vote, we have, we have a clear understanding of how we're gonna behave and how we, how we're gonna interact with our, with our community, which has valid concerns. They have not had a drone flying around here before, and so they have questions about
That they know of.
Why is it happening now? Yeah, right, right. I mean, yeah, absolutely. So.
Ken.
The difference occurs. I think the difference occurs when is a town flying it or a private person. Aaron's suggestion about, you know, we're gonna be flying, give a day and time, maybe also add the purpose of this, so they have some concept. We are flying so that we can, we're going down Main Street to show all of the businesses, or, you know, just tell the people why you're doing it, I think. I don't know. I would want to know why.
Yeah, I get that. It can be, yeah, it can be hard to predict when you're gonna fly, because weather conditions can change. And if, I'm just putting that out there. And we really only want to fly this when it's calm, when it's nice, not precipitating, and when it's availability. But I like the idea about the purpose as well. It's not impossible to predict a flight. And if the board feels that that needs to be added to this, then we add it. I have no problem doing that. And so I would, I would support that.
But you could even say, not give a specific time, say during the week of such and such, we will be flying.
Oh, okay.
On, you know, good weather, whatever, something.
Yeah, keep, keep it general. The generalness certainly helps from, from my perspective, that would, that would be very helpful. And then we would just make sure it was posted on our website, or the town, the bulletin board, or something like that, as we do our best to inform the public of anything that takes place at any time, so. Okay, so.
Just one, one quick thought, Ken. On that D for recreational purposes, perhaps it would be, sound better if it was for non-commercial purposes.
I have that written down. I did catch that earlier. I like that language a lot better. I like that a lot better, yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't mean we're not playing, we're doing it, we're just not doing it for money. Recreation means like you're doing it for games.
So, and the other thing is too, is this drone, one second, Chris, this drone could be used for inspection of a water tower. If Tina wanted to see something that was going on at the water tower, or wanted to see the top of it, for example, if she wanted to inspect the roof of the wastewater treatment plant a couple of weeks ago, or, you know, when we had, when we had a missing person, theoretically that drone could have been used to scan the shore from the water in the absence of a boat. And certainly, our own property assets, we can, we can use it to inspect our own properties to get a sense of, of what, what is okay, what we, and get a, just a different view. So, it's much more than just flying around people's homes and trying to get the, the right shot of Essex for marketing. There are some additional purposes here that should be considered as well. And that would be the purpose, Claire, which I think is spot-on.
I, I think there needs to be, I haven't had a chance to really, I haven't had a chance to go through this document at all, so, I'm, forgive me, I'm sort of flying blind here, but I think that.
Nice point.
My phone is literally, several people have just texted me, and there are concerns about, you know, safety and, you know, these things are, there's just some safety issues. And people are concerned about being surprised and, you know, wondering who's controlling it, and where is it, where is it going, and where is it coming from and all this. So, I just think that you just need to be, we, if we're gonna do this drone thing, and I get the, the marketing angle, and I get the examples you just said of a missing person in the lake, and Tina looking at the water tower, that's all good stuff. But we just need to be really careful and respectful because this sort of stuff, I, a couple of weeks ago, Lexi and I experienced some people messing around with a drone in the middle of Main Street, in the middle of the day, with cars going by, we're flying a drone. And so I just don't want to set the wrong precedent. We just have to be very responsible with this. And it may be in here, Ken, I don't know, but there, there needs to be some legal coverage. This is a, this is a lawsuit waiting to happen. If this, I, I've flown a lot of RC stuff, airplanes, I'm not a drone guy, I'm an airplane guy. And I'm registered with the FAA and covered with insurance. And I just would like to know what kind of insurance is gonna cover this, because this thing can do some damage and hurt some people. If, if there's a problem. thing can do some damage and hurt some people if, if there's a problem. So, I just wanna err on the side of caution and be very careful about it. So, I'm glad this isn't being pushed through tonight, 'cause I wouldn't go for it, but, but let's work on it and make it right, and, and make it so that people feel comfortable, and that the town is covered, and that people feel comfortable, and that it's, uh, people understand what it's gonna be used for. I'm glad that Claire asked those questions.
I agree.
So, this is my two cents.
Maybe we could ask the general public for their opinion on drones. People who are listening now could give us, you know, written feedback, email, whatever, um.
I think.
I don't know, I, I think we, I think we would li- ha- like to have people involved. I, I think the, you know, I think the public should be involved in something like this.
The, the thing I would like to add is what Ken started with. This is just for our particular drone. Eighteen people can have drones out there flying, and we have no control over what they do, don't do, when they do, and how they do. This, we're trying to establish controls on our drone, because we can't control everybody else's.
Well, yeah, but we also set a precedence here, uh, the, the, the people that I, uh, and Craig Jackson was in on this, the, the people that were flying this drone on Main Street were members of, uh, the Essex EMS, and doing something that I thought was incredibly unsafe. And I get that this document is only pertaining to the town drone, but, um, w- we need to just make sure that we're not setting a precedent. We need to be very careful and show people that we're being thorough about defining what this drone is for. And I agree with you, Ron, and I agree with Claire too. And I also, I, I like what Aaron said about, yeah, there should be some sort of notification. People get very edgy when they see some random, they hear a sound. Drones make noise. A lot of people don't know what it sounds like. Some of us do know what it sounds like. It's just, it's a, it's a buzzing sound, and if you don't know what it is, it can seem very creepy, and it can really frighten people. So, I like the idea of letting me a text or whatever it is, letting people know, hey, we're gonna be flying the drone, weather permitting, between 1:00 and 3:00 PM in the downtown area, for example.
And we have an alert system that we could use as well to alert people of that, you know, in addition to the, uh, websites and any kind of, you know, just to give heads up, we have that texting service and the email service that we could use for that as well.
I think that's a good point. Um, I think as you're saying, Ken, it could push us forward, and if it can be helpful to Tina, um, or for going forward to our water treatment plant, I mean, that, that could be fantastic for us. And also, you know, thankful for the person who donated this as well, uh, giving the respect of the donation, but I understand the concern. But I think this discussion has been really good, and I think it's possible. Last thing we wanna do is worry anyone with this. I think, I think, I think we need to get that across, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's why I put this out for a draft. This is all really, really great. And, uh, and I know I've talked to at least two other supervisors in Essex County who are interested in knowing what our result is, because they, uh, have drones and they would like to, uh, to, 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 to glean what we, uh, what we create, so, um, yeah. So, I've taken a whole bunch of notes on this document, and I would encourage you all to, to talk with constituents, uh, you know, get feedback from them as you talk to them and they reach out to you, um, kind of organize your thoughts, and then if you wanna meet, you know, talk with me one-on-one, um, we can, we can put edits to this document, and we can come up with a much stronger document, uh, for the June meeting. And, uh, nothing says we have to approve it in June, um, but, uh, if we're able to get this done, and we can, we can check that off the list and get it finished, we move on. Um, so, uh, I will continue to work on this, and I'll share this out with the board as, as what my updates are, and, and we can keep continuing on this conversation. But all terrific points from, from all of you. Thank you. Thank you. Any final points to be made before I move on? Great, okay, moving on. So, this is, uh, the next, we have our transfer station intermu- the intermunicipal agreement. And this was, this is the language that currently is on file from the two, we found the 2015, actually, I couldn't find the 2015 agreement. I actually had, uh, texted Sean Gilliland, the supervisor of Willsboro, and he was able to provide it for me. I, I was not able to find it in our records. So, the only thing I changed was at the top where it says, "This agreement made the day of 2020." 2020 originally was 2015. So, all of this is the same. None of this has changed, uh, from what I was provided by, by Supervisor Gilliland in Willsboro. So, um, it would be wonderful. There are, there are modifications that need to be made, particularly to page four, um, and, and the, the cost of things, and, and when we accept certain items, for example, it says metal is accepted Saturdays only, which is not the case. So, there's some, there are some edits that need to be made to this document, um, on that last page, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, because this is something that I think we should be, um, agreeing to and reviewing, uh, either annually or at least biannually. Does anybody have any thoughts on the intermu- intermunicipal agreement? You may not have had time to read it, and that's, that's completely okay, but I would like to make sure that we have a chance to edit it and review it for a conversation and, and hopefully a vote in June.
If you look on page, the first page, it's one, two, three, four, five, six down, where it says, "Whereas Willsboro so desires blah, 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 they could use the facilities, is willing to fairly share in the cost of its operation and maintenance." Now, it's my understanding that right now, their only interest is in buying tickets. I could be wrong.
I think you're right.
But is that, I mean, it would be, it were. I mean, or, for example, now, we need to, we need to do the fence, right?
Yes.
So, if I read this correctly, they would share in the cost of the fence.
Well, to an approved document.
I, I, I think it's great to look at it like that.
Great, great catch, Claire.
No, I, I think it's, but right now, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the only thing they do is purchase tickets.
I think you're right.
I haven't.
In ten years, I had one meeting after Lori was supervisor. I never could get another supervisor to come to a meeting on the dump. 'Cause they're supposed to meet yearly, but I never had any luck.
They didn't wanna talk to you, Ron.
I can understand that. That hurt my feelings. The attempt was made, that's all I have to do.
Well, there you.
Well, I personally feel.
On the last page.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Claire, go ahead.
Last page where it says, uh, "We've changed the rates," but it also says, "Must be in clear plastic bags." I don't think we've ever enforced that.
We have not.
These are the, now, these are the changes that need to be updated. Yeah, these are the little things that we just need to.
Right, I, I mean.
Modernize, just make, yeah, you're right. Yep.
And then, I don't know how it relates now, because our ticket price has gone up. So, I think one punch doesn't equal a dollar anymore.
You're correct, yeah. I wanted to give it to you in its pure format from 2015, and then over the course of the month.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna work with Harold to update this last page to make it accurate to what it is right now. Uh, where my major concern is, is that, um, you know, page one, two, and three are, um, are agreeable and understood by the, by our town board, so that it can be shared with their town board, and we can, we can both agree on this, on this document.
Okay, well, I only went through it once, and those were the two things that stood out to me, but I will look at it again.
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be really, really great. Any other comments about the transfer station intermunicipal agreement? I encourage you to look over the drone agreement, policy, and disagreement over the coming weeks. Please get back in touch with me about your suggestions for edits, modifications, or admissions, and deletions, and then we can, um, we can come to an agreement. Um, I have to figure out how to do this, because if we agree to it and vote on it in June, but then, uh, and we share it with Willsboro, and they don't like it, then we, we've got an issue, so, um.
Back to square one.
If you can get back to me? Yeah, so if you can get back to me maybe in the next couple of weeks, uh, with, uh, with edits, modifications, or concerns, then I can bring those modification changes to Sean for him and I to discuss, and we can discuss with his board, and then we can, uh, hopefully, uh, come to a, uh, a ten-way agreement, uh, between the two boards.
What, one thing I wanna just mention to you that's on, on I, it talks about when the account gets over $50,000, it's supposed to be divided. Well, we're way over that, I can tell you.
Yep.
And we've never divided money, because we all know there's something coming at some time, and it's certainly the fence is not gonna be over $50,000, but something may come along, cost money, and if it's hitting in the account, we won't have to go to our taxpayers for it.
Right. So, that might be something.
So, that's not really, that's not a number we're abiding by, that $50,000. So, you need to talk about that with Sean, I would think.
Okay. Do you, would you support it being stricken from the policy?
Uh, I would, but I don't know if they would.
Well.
I would too, and I think that we need to leave the further that whereas I spoke about.
Uh, that they're willing to fairly share in the cost?
Right. I agree.
You're on.
The only thing I can think of them saying is, well, if you're gonna ask us to share in the costs, where are we supposed to get our money from? You know, because.
Well, the idea is they won't be sharing in the cost if there's money there to pay for anything that's needed.
But that, but I think Claire is supporting, and I think Aaron also nudged in that direction, that they do want Willsboro to share in the cost.
They do, by purchasing tickets, just like our people purchase tickets. The town never puts any money in there. The only thing that we do, and I've tried and just have no luck, like when we mow it every year, the town should build a transfer site for the time that Jerry spends, or whoever spends mowing it, and we just, that just never seems to happen. So, we do support it that way, but there's money there to pay, and we shouldn't be donating that. We should get reimbursed for anything that we have to do that way.
All right, what if, what about, take out letter I?
If I took out letter I?
I just, take out letter I, that giving them, uh, over the $50,000, and not enforce the, you know, leave the share in the cost. Actually, maybe you could even, I don't know.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Let me think about that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Hey, you gotta want to think about it.
All right, I don't know.
Yeah, let's sit on it, let's think about it. Um, I, I think it's a strong document already, uh, but certainly it needs to be reviewed, and that's why we're doing this. So, uh, if you all could, uh, give it some time and then be in touch with me, I would say by, if you could do it by the end of this month, that'll give me time to talk with Sean and, and, and have a two, two-week lag time, or two-week, uh, uh, time ahead before our next meeting to, um, to, to come back to you with something. Is that okay?
Yes.
I think the major update needs to be the last page.
Yes, I agree, 100%. You're, you're totally right. Yep, that needs, that needs a overhaul, overhaul, I should say. Yeah, you can see on the top of the last page, updated June 29th, 2005. So, it's, it's 15 years out of date, which is unacceptable. Okay, um, moving on to the supervisors' updates. Um, you all have, should have access to my supervisor's update here, as well as the code enforcement officer, and, uh, wastewater treatment plants, and waters department, they have all submitted. And, uh, I don't know if Bradley sub- uh, submitted his to, to, uh, the town clerk. I did not receive it. It may be in your mailbox, but I don't think it is yet, but I did speak with him today, and I'm assuming he'll get that to you. Uh, Essex County highlights, uh, we will be having an in-person meeting on Monday, uh, at Essex, at the, uh, at the, um, at the, at the county. Uh, we will be socially distanced and wearing masks and with hand sanitizer, uh, to take care of some business. Uh, supervisors may not attend remotely, which is unfortunate, uh, but, uh, I will be attending that meeting on Monday. Um, Dan Palmer, the county manager, has been doing a ton of great work, uh, taking care of county employees, uh, and I, I must give credit to Supervisor Gilliland, who has not only been doing a great job, uh, he's been doing double duty, managing not only, um, his own town, but, uh, taking care of the county as well, and his communication has been terrific. And, uh, we're, we're really fortunate to have, uh, really gifted individuals at leadership positions at the county. Uh, Dan Manning has also been amazing, our county attorney, at answering questions about a, a variety of things related to reopening, and what's legal, what's not legal, what you can do, what you can't do. So, um, um, yeah, it's been, it's been, you know, when, when the governor says something can happen, so, for example, the governor says that tomorrow, or Friday, yes, tomorrow, tennis courts, tennis is allowed. Well, now, I've gotta make sure I understand, um, you know, we, we, I got a call today from the credit club about what tennis looks like, and how can we do it, and how do we keep it safe? And so, these are just ideas and thoughts that come into this office, um, and Ron and Claire, you've been there, you know, that have to be dealt with, and, and you, you don't wanna break the law, and you wanna make sure you're abiding by the law at the local level as well. So, um, uh, both Dan's and Sean, uh, have provided excellent leadership, uh, in, in their respective areas, uh, to me as a brand-new supervisor, so it's very much appreciated. Uh, moving on to the transfer station, we talked about it briefly. Uh, we're gonna resume our three-day-a-week operation, uh, returning to, uh, that service on, uh, May 20th, uh, 2020. Uh, so it'll be, uh, Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Mondays, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We're still not able to accept recyclables. Uh, Essex County petitioned the Department of Health to, uh, stop that, and the Department of Health, uh, supported that, so, uh, for the protection of our employees. So, no recycling still, uh, but we will be back to three days a week.
Do they take the metal, or is that, uh?
Metal is okay. Yep, no, metal, uh, scrap, scrap metal in that, in that large bin from Moore.
Yep.
Yep, that's okay. Yep, that's okay.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Yep, thank you for bringing that up. And, uh, if you are listening and you do use the transfer station, you are respectfully requested to stay in your vehicle while the gentlemen are, uh, remove the garbage from your car for you. Um, so, we appreciate that. Couple of town hall updates. Um, I, I had four originally for the town board, but a couple others came up, and I just wanna make sure that you're aware of this. Uh, Fourth of July events have been canceled. As for the, uh, the fire commissioners, uh, I, they had a meeting last week, and they had this conversation, and they made the decision to cancel it out of a bundle of precautions for public health. So, it is, uh, it is unfortunate, but I do support the decision. It is the right thing to do. Wayland, the Waylands Bay Boathouse had some minor repairs that need to be made to it. Um, there were a bunch of birds living inside of it and making nests inside. Uh, that's because under the eaves, uh, some large pieces of plywood had fallen out, uh, and so I've spoken with Bradley, and he's gonna put up some, uh, pieces of plywood to just, uh, fix those holes so that we don't have birds, uh, living and, and, uh, and going to the bathroom inside of that building. As you also are aware, hopefully, uh, the downtown Hamlet, uh, has seen, uh, their street signs repainted. I have an example of it right here. Um, uh, the signs were becoming faded, and had been faded, and I, I figured, well, let's spruce them up, let's get them nice-looking, and let's get them cleaned up. So, Jim Van Hoven, uh, rightfully and willingly took up the, took up the task, as I had, I asked him about it. He painted our, our signs earlier, uh, the historical signs earlier, and, um, and so he was, he's, he's doing the task of this. And what's nice is that the white lettering is reflective. He puts on this little glitter on it so that it reflects off the, uh, off the headlights at night. So, uh, I've been taking them down off the post and giving them to Jim, and he gives them back to me, and then I put them back up on the post. Uh, the highway guys have been very helpful, because. The highway guys have been very helpful because sometimes those bolts that I twist off, they break. And so, they've been really great at re-drilling the holes for me for the ones I break. The Essex Community Fund grant is coming due for the radar signs. And I just want to remind anybody who's listening who wants to support this grant of $5,000 for radar signs. They can send me a letter, but I'm in the process of writing that grant now, and that'll be due at the end of this month. Wanted to speak very briefly. I've been in touch with Gary Hyrick, who is representative of a group of individuals, investors, donors, who wish to build a porch on the town hall because of COVID-19 and because of a shutdown of construction projects at the time and of all types of non-essential construction, that it was decided for the time being to put the town porch project on hold, which is a bummer. But we have time to get that porch built, and it would be, who have everybody involved? From the construction workers and the contractors to the general public and us to have it done at a time when it's safest for everybody to be involved in that. So it will be delayed, and I'll continue to work with Gary and discuss what a timeline might look like for the future. Also want to share with you that there's been conversations about whether to open the bathroom behind town hall. We have a bathroom on the back of town hall that's used by the public. I'm recommending that we are going to close that bathroom, actually, not even open the bathroom. We're going to turn the water on, but we're not going to open the bathroom. And the reason is this. Public bathrooms are, on a good day, a Petri dish of germs. And the Department of Health has, and I think I sent this to all of you, the Department of Health has issued guidance on what it takes to keep a public restroom clean. And they are super stringent, and they are just prohibitive. And so, the fortunate news is that we, and cost prohibitive. We would have to have somebody cleaning it probably four times a day. The good news is, is that we don't have a lot of foot traffic in the downtown hamlet, which means that if there are people walking around, they're mostly residents, and they have access to a bathroom. If worse came to worst, and there was a resident who needed to use the bathroom, and they were in our area, I am generally at town hall most days, and they would be able to, I would make that allowance as an emergency. There's a porta potty at the ferry parking lot, which I put in when the ferry shut down. I did it as a good faith effort for anybody who might have been traveling to, you know, coming to the ferry, couldn't get to the ferry out of town or use the porta potty. I'm going to get rid of a porta potty as well. There is a porta potty at the ferry parking lot. I want to reduce, I want to eliminate, not just reduce, but I want to eliminate our liability with respect to any type of public bathroom. We pay for the porta potty. I don't want to pay for it anymore. I don't want that liability in case a porta potty becomes a hotbed for COVID-19 transmission. The porta potty is probably checked once a week or once every two weeks, and I just, I don't want to take the risk. And additionally, I'm assuming you'll interrupt me if you wish about anything I'm saying right now. Additionally, I want to, Bags Park is open for use. But I would like to, as the weather gets nicer, I'd like for the town board to support, and I know that there is already a no swimming sign down there, I would like for the town board to support the closing off or marking of off limits for that dock that goes out into the water, as well as for that unofficial beach area that is behind the pavilion. I think those are two places that promote gathering and swimming. And certainly, the dock is so narrow that it's impossible. You have one way in and one way out, and people are going to be passing each other from different families, from different pods, if you will. I don't feel comfortable with that right now. Recreation is phase four of the reopening of New York State, and we're entering phase one tomorrow. Phase four, even if we're all angels and do all the right things, phase four wouldn't be for another month from now because there's two weeks in between each phase. So I would really like to keep Bags Park open, allow the fishermen to continue to fish off the rocks where they do fish on the Broad Lake side. But I really would like to mark off limits for that little beachy area where people might sit and just enjoy or the dock. Is that something that you can support?
I can support that. The only thing I'm, I'm thinking about the other porta potties that we usually have. Are we going to continue with those? Or should we wait until this is a bit more open?
I had a question.
Okay.
I agree. I can't, yeah. Let me, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, anyone traveling, where is the closest bathroom for them? Is Willsboro going to have their town, is that going to be open? I was just wondering, where could somebody?
Ferry dock, nope.
Yeah. So is, and do we know if the ferry, is the ferry going to have their bathroom open? Because I know the onboard bathrooms are not open.
Yeah, so the ferry has that permanent structure bathroom, which has been closed. They do have a porta potty directly in front of it. So that's where I would, you know, that's where I would recommend, that's where I would direct people to go, you know. I don't want them, I'm looking out for the town. I don't want the liability for the town because it's, one person is all it takes. Another person, you know, I just, I get real nervous about that really quickly. You talk about lawsuits. Holy cow, mind blown on that one. So Claire, to your point, I was not thinking that we would put porta potties down there because I just can't keep them clean.
And that includes Waylands Bay too.
This is my, right, you've got one at Bags, one at Waylands Bay, and I'm thinking, with all of the sanitation that is required for regular bathrooms, I, boy, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think I sent you the link on the requirements that to keep a bathroom officially open and officially clean. I mean, think about golf courses, you know. I mean, I don't know if golf courses are closing their bathrooms or not.
They are.
Yeah. I don't know of any public bathrooms that are open right now, except for in businesses.
Well, in, yeah, in a business, right.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I think that until things settle down a great deal, that maybe the porta potties shouldn't, we shouldn't do them. But I see Aaron's point that people, you know, you need to use the bathroom, but.
But.
I've always advocated that, you know, business should have their own bathrooms. You know, I don't know. Six of one, half a dozen of the other, you know.
I think I was just curious, because someone may ask, because I'm often walking up and down Main Street with my kids, and I'll get stopped frequently, where to direct these people. But I agree. I mean, in the respect to the town, having, you know, as Ken put it, a Petri dish of a porta potty is probably, it's not wise. So I agree that we shouldn't have them.
It's horrible for people traveling, but.
But also, who's traveling right now?
Yeah, not many.
Yeah, so.
They always have the ferry.
All right.
They have the ferry.
Yeah.
They have the, not the boat, but they have the ferry parked, they have the ferry dock.
Yeah. And then.
Or if they go to the pink, buy something, then there is a bathroom there.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
The owner. I absolutely, I would never.
No, it says for.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 I wouldn't either. No, 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 I wouldn't ask any other business. But the businesses, a lot, I shouldn't say a lot. One business in particular always sent their people over inside the town hall to use that bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is why we built the bathroom out back, but that was a different time than now, unfortunately.
Yeah, I agree, Ron.
It's unfortunate, but I mean, it's reality, right?
Sounds like we have a general consensus that the porta potties should be removed and should not be installed in other locations until things, like Claire said, settle down.
I would agree with that.
Yep, me too.
Okay. Okay, and if anybody's asked, the nearest bathroom would be at the ferry parking lot. Okay, moving on. I love this robust discussion. Thank you so very much. I'd like to move on to number nine, abstract of the bills. Everybody in the room, except for one of the council members, has had the opportunity to go through the bills. So we do have enough to support a passage. I would need a motion and a second to approve the bills.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Claire. Do I have a second?
I can second.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Erin. Alicia, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman DePinto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapine?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hughes?
Yes, thank you. Is there anything for the good of the order before we adjourn our meeting?
Yes.
Yes, Alicia.
I just want to point out on the fourth page for the transfer station agreement, it says hours, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday, 8:30 to 5:00. It should be nine, shouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that fourth page needs a whole other revision. That's a great catch. Yep. That fourth page, I'm going to sit with Harold, not too close, of course, but I'm going to work with him to get that page updated to what it should be. A great catch, Alicia. Yeah, thank you. Oh, I have one more thing for the good of the order. For the past almost two months, the Town of Essex has been under a local emergency order. We, I signed that emergency order into effect on March 20, when I learned that we had our first COVID infection. Those orders kept repeating themselves. I had to fill out the form every five days to keep that order in motion. That order is finished tomorrow. So we are no longer going to be under a local emergency order tomorrow. That does not affect anything, any day-to-day life. It gave the supervisor, my office, some additional authority to spend money or to call upon services and agencies to help keep Essex as safe as possible, and which has been my great joy and delight in doing over the past two months. And we no longer need that order in place because New York is going on pause. Effective at 12:01 tomorrow morning, New York is officially unpause. And so.
If something comes up, you can always put it back.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And for anybody listening, one more thing for the board as well. There are very specific rules about what business industries in phase one must do in order to prove that they are worthy to reopen. And I encourage anybody interested in knowing what those are related to construction and manufacturing to go to either the forward.ny.gov, or you can go to essexnewyork.com and click on the link on the homepage. It'll bring you to that website and give you complete details on all the things you need to do as a business in order to prove to the state that you are abiding by the rules and regulations of the governor and the governor's office to stay safe and healthy. So. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Claire, Ron, Erin, and Chris, and Alicia, it's been a pleasure. Again, thank you very much for your patience. To all the people, and Erin, welcome to the board. I hope you had a good.
Thank you again.
To those of you in the audience, thank you for attending. We really appreciate your participation or your observation. If you have public comments, please send me an email or give me a call. Supervisor@townofessexny.gov or 518-963-4287, extension four. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, all, that is all. We are adjourned at 8:39. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great.
See everybody later.